Everyone in?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I have a kind of a long agenda tonight. We're starting at five because because our consultant Ted Fink and our attorney John First will not be able to join us later, so we want to move the chapters along as best we can. So they were available at 5 o'clock and so we're taking advantage of that. Tonight is we're starting off with continued public hearing discussion on proposed local laws to amend the following chapters. Chapter 134, 104, and 76. Basically, tonight, we're going to be discussing 134. There are two options or two ways. Well, there's more than two that we could go, but on the table tonight for discussion, Marie Trustee Early has a proposal and Ted Fink also has a proposal, so we'll discuss both of those, compare them, see which one, you know, the questions will be, I guess, to John and Ted, which is tighter or which state advise us moving ahead with if we want to change to an MU to a mixed use zone. And so we're waiting for John to come on and we'll start.
John is on.
Okay. One other thing, we probably will not be taking public comment tonight. We have a limited time and then we have an audit. It starts at 6:30. An audit report, so it'll be a long night, so we probably will not be taking public comment tonight. We'll continue the public hearing, obviously, because a decision has been made, so just understand that. And with that said, so hi, John. How are you? John, unmuted?
Yep. I'm here. Sorry about that.
Not a problem. Thank you. Thank you guys for being here. So I guess tonight, and if I'm incorrect in this, we have a couple of proposals for a mixed use that would add more controls. Ted has, I've sent both of these to you. I think both of you have the two proposals. One is the proposal Ted put together, which is, let's see, I have it somewhere here, is the regulations for a PMU dash two planned mixed unit district. We can call it what we want. That's what it was named by Ted. And the two is because of the area, Mayor's Park, that is designated I1. So he wasn't sure how that was going to work, so he designated this as MU2. And then we also have Marie's kind of added controls to what the code update committee had recommended for the regulations for a PMU1 planned unit mixed use district. Do we have it right so far? So I don't know if Ted and John, if you had a time to look at the two or where we should go with that. The differences or, you know, I'm not sure which which way to go with this. If you guys have, you know, reviewed them and could comment on both of them or how we can put them together. I don't think they're far apart. I'm not sure exactly all the differences in them. I think there might be differences in the bulk requirements. I think there might be the first steps in the in the proposal where when it goes to the village board, there might be a little bit of a difference there. Marie refers to a development plan. I don't know if Marie, if you could elaborate on that, what a development plan is?
Is the need for a planned unit development. So that would be the documentation and the process associated with development plan.
Not a conceptual plan.
Well, I think that a planned unit development is in part more abstract than a site plan would be.
Not sure I understand. So a conceptual plan to me is something they would bring in drawings of what the site would look like and not to any degree of specificity or the as the degree that you would go with a site plan. So I'm not sure. I'm not sure. It seems like that step's missing that you and yours, you don't think that should be required, a conceptual plan?
No. Would include drawings, the proposed drawings, the drawings for the proposed development.
Okay, so could you point out maybe since you you, you know, made these changes, what the difference would be in the two drafts as far as the first steps go or what you think yours has, the other doesn't, or what's what's needed and why?
I think that the primary difference is in the first paragraph. The conceptual plan, let me pull it up.
Marie?
Yes.
It's we're having, I don't know about anybody else. I'm having trouble hearing you again as your head moves toward and away from the speaker.
Okay, I will not move my head.
Sorry, I know that's not comfortable.
So the if if I look at the Ted's documentation, the purpose of the district, I don't see any any difference there. There is no purpose in in my document. Standards and procedures. I would bear with me to nothing, nothing personal. I would just ignore that for the time being. I don't think there's any difference of opinion there. The special use permit approval, because the conceptual plan includes a special use permit for the concept plan, what I sent out doesn't have that in it. So that's a difference. I don't know Ted whether or not a special use permit is required for a conceptual plan. That's a question.
That was the intent was to require a special use permit based upon the concept plan that would be developed for overall development of the site.
But why a special use permit?
Well, it's, we had originally discussed the possibility of requiring a rezoning of the property through something like a PUD as a floating zone. That's a more involved process than a special use permit, which I had used because it's it's a really an intermediary process by the village board. It would allow for retaining that authority to issue a special use permit where it's ordinarily required from the planning board for any special permit uses. But in this case, because of a couple of factors, one of which was the size of the site, the importance in terms of its effects on the on the whole village, the emphasis that's been placed on this particular site in the comprehensive plan, the local waterfront revitalization strategy, and because of the the uniqueness of the property as a result of the form, you know, the contamination from the former battery operations that those all seem to point to having some village board input and control over the overall development that would occur on the property. And and I guess the only other thing is that it, you know, there were a list of suggested uses in the comprehensive plan, residential, office, retail, work, live units, open space, you know, those sorts of things. And you know, they're all permitted in there, but there's no guarantee that the types of of land uses that were desired by the village residents throughout the whole planning process leading to the comprehensive plan and the local waterfront revitalization strategy that those would be actually proposed by, you know, a developer that wished to seek a development approval on the site. And that having the village board approval of especially this permit would would help to further that discussion and and realization of the comprehensive plan recommendations.
Could not a village board of trustees approval be an element of this process without having a special use permit required?
I have the same question, Marie.
I think a special use permit gives it a category and then there's New York State statutory requirements that that the state requires or and then and then the village can then choose its own criteria. So I thought the idea was you you originally had the proposed MU1 district and some of the board members were concerned that, you know, you want a little more of control points, meaning, you know, this is a big piece of property for the for the reasons Ted had mentioned. This is very important development. So then we kind of started talking about, you know, a floating zone. But then people thought, well, maybe that's a little too much because that would involve a rezoning. So I think what Ted did was I think he found a kind of a happy medium where you have something, a conceptual plan that can be reviewed and approved by the village board. You call a special use permit because under the village, New York State Village Law, there's a specific section for special use permits. So that way we know where to look. And in addition, the village can include and add its own criteria to review as part of the special use permit. And I think Ted started kind of listing some of the things that should be looked at. So I kind of thought it was a good happy medium where a special use permit, you know, it's not as a right, but you know, it's not like they're asking for a rezone or a use variance. So it's something where there is some discretion with the village board. But you know, the criteria, you know, but you got you still have to look at the criteria. And essentially, if the proposed project hits and meets all these criteria or conditions, you know, then then the developer would essentially be entitled to the proposal. So it's it's kind of a happy medium. Because we got to give it some criteria, you know, you guys have to look at something as far as does it check all the boxes for what, you know, we're looking for.
Okay, so you introduced two more, two more terms have been introduced. One is rezoning. And the other is the floating zone. I thought we had somewhat done away with the using a technique or a process called a floating zone. So
Yes, I think that's and that's what Ted, that's why Ted is saying, why don't we do a special use permit from the village board instead of a rezoning from the village board?
Okay, but that's different, right? There's this, there's floating zones and then there's rezoning. I don't understand where rezoning falls into this at all. The word rezoning has been used. What rezoning would or would not be required?
So in Ted's proposal, the only rezoning would be adopting these regulations. You, the developer wouldn't have to come back for a site specific reason.
Okay, so so the reason could, 134 is the zoning chapter. If the if we approve as part of 134, the inclusion of this document into chapter 134, there is no additional rezoning. Is that correct?
Correct. There would be no additional rezoning for the developer. It would just be a special use permit for the concept plan. And then once that's approved, then they can work out the site plan details with the planning board.
Okay, so I'm back to why a special use permit? Why not just approval from the village board?
Because you especially use, once you categorize it as a special use permit under the New York State Village Law, then it sets the criteria that an applicant must meet in order to be entitled to that special use permit. So special use permits are not, you're not, they're not permitted as a right. They're permitted as long as you meet the criteria, as long as you meet the conditions.
Okay.
So if you just say village board approval, well, what's the discretion? What's, you know, you need, you need the concrete kind of criteria that, you know, if you if you just say village board approval, well, what's the village going to base that approval on? If you call the special use permit, then you know exactly what the village is going to base that approval on.
Yes, that's not clear to me yet. And in the original MU1 and in what Ted has proposed here, there are, you just mentioned uses. There are a set of uses which I would think that the applicant would have to meet. In addition to the set of uses that are contained in the documentation, in both Ted's documentation and my documentation, there are uses, there are bulk requirements that have to be met. Percentages of a specific use that has to be met or which cannot be exceeded. So I would think that that including the uses, the bulk requirements and the percentages in chapter 134 in either the PMU1 or PMU2 would identify that which the applicant must meet. And and that is the criteria that the village board would be looking for.
There's other criteria that you can consider, community character, consistency with the comprehensive plan, aesthetics, traffic, off-street parking, not, and that kind of goes beyond just the the numbers, the calculations.
Well, I would argue that, John, which I and I love to argue with you, off-street parking can be can be specifically identified and is identified in chapter 134. Things like village character and aesthetics, those are a bit more amorphous. It's, it's like, I don't want to use the Supreme Court definition of a particular topic, but village, it's difficult to.
Sorry, sorry. I just got where you're going.
I, it's difficult to say that a conceptual plan or a PUD meets village character or does not.
I disagree with that. I mean, I defer to Ted, but I think you can certainly show our project meets the is consistent with community character. I mean, I've done it a bunch of times. You know, it's one of the factors under under special use permit, boards look at it all the time. It's a factor under secret that you look at. So you've got to look at it under secret regardless.
As well, that's again, a very difficult topic to say that a conceptual plan or a planned unit development meets or meets the aesthetics criteria.
Yeah, as far as community character, Marie, that is much broader than simply the aesthetics of the village. When you look at a community character issue, essentially what the guidance from the state and as far as I know, the the case law on this has said is that your village comprehensive plan is the expression of the community character of Cold Spring. And so what you what you do typically in trying to assess impacts on community character is to look at all of the, it's the sum total of the comprehensive plan. It's a, it can be a fairly exhaustive analysis, but it's one that, as John said, is is frequently employed when you're dealing with a very large scale project, such as one involving the last remaining undeveloped parcel in the village and to ensure that it's consistent in as is possible as those policies have been developed for as part of the comprehensive plan. So it's, it's usually undertaken as part of seeker. It's required when you get into a type one action to assess community character. And that usually means opening up a whole variety of different issues. Traffic is one. Aesthetics is another, you know, but there are many other ones that are sometimes judged to be intangible sort of of issues. And it's, and it is very difficult and and you're not the only one that has a hard time wrapping your mind around what is community character. I find that in many instances, it's difficult for people to to gain a concept of what it is. One of the, one of the best places that you'll find to understand how this has been dealt with on a statewide basis is in the D E C's seeker handbook. It came out in 2020 and it's got a very good discussion of how one goes about assessing community character. And, you know, I'd certainly encourage you to to take a look at that, to try and have a better understanding of what that means. But that's, that's the kind of thing that is often looked at as part of these sort of bigger projects.
And something we haven't even mentioned yet, but it's but it's important to acknowledge is that this parcel is also in the historic district. So questions of character will also be addressed from from that aspect as well.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I agree with that entirely. It's the historic character as well. And when I was developing this, one of the things which which I had in the, I think it was in the, let's see. There was a section that was devoted to the planning board review of the concept plan as part of the village board special use permit. And I had also thought that you may well consider involving the architectural historic district review board in in that as well. I didn't include it. This is on the third page of the document under it's actually B3H where it says planning board. And basically, it says, when the village board receives a proposal for approval of concept plans, special use permit shall refer such concept plan to the planning board for its advisory review and recommendations. You could easily include the architectural historic district board in that if you felt that that was warranted for for this type of a development.
I think it's, in my view, it's absolutely necessary. Can I, can I ask a question? I'm sorry, Marie, you're not finished. Go ahead.
A conceptual plan.
I really hear you.
Conceptual plan. I'm not sure what the HDRB would be able to evaluate in a conceptual plan.
Things like mass and scale.
But is that not the responsibility of the planning board?
It is the responsibility of both the planning board and the HDRB. Mass and scale. Absolutely. Look, look at the criteria in chapter 64, Marie.
Okay, I think we're, I mean, we're going back and forth. I mean, the initial question was regarding regarding special use permits. We've somehow found our way to discussing the purview of the HDRB. To go to reel it back a little. First of all, I don't understand why you're opposed to having it as a special use permit. I mean, maybe we understand why we shouldn't have it. I mean, if it's in there, it doesn't seem like it's a, it's a step that's would that takes too much or is requiring too much and it's to prove, you know, it's for the benefit of the village, I would think. Why don't you want a special use permit? Or why is that causing you?
The original question is, what's the difference between the two?
Yes.
And I asked the question of why a special use permit? If I look at all of the elements of a special use permit, they identi- identification include the general statement, the fundamental analysis community character, aesthetics, review by the HDRB, a concept plan. There was discussion about landscaping, et cetera. It seems to me that that all of these elements will make the obtaining of a special use permit. Sorry, let me put aside the special use permit for a moment. The requirements that the applicant submit, the the materials that the applicant must submit for approval, whether it's approval of a special use permit or whatever, are extremely lengthy. And my concern is that that the burden being placed upon the applicant is very extensive for the applicant to, for the village board to evaluate and approve. That, I think, is the fundamental difference between what I had sent out and what Ted has identified.
And also requiring it's going to the the board first and they're for their reviews. So if they're not doing exactly what we're doing, what you just said was cumbersome or onerous to a developer, that what's the difference there? And and I don't know. I mean, I mean, you can explain to me, I mean, Ted and John, if 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 we're asked, what we're asking here or with a special use permit and having the app, the developer would come to us. I know, I mean, it's a big project, so it's going to be, there's a lot of work involved for that person. But that work is also is used in the next step. It's not like you start all over again or whatever. So is this really, you know, that much work if it's not a special permit or if it went to the, you know, I don't know where we're, you know, Marie, Marie's and and your plan both go to the village board first. So I'm not sure. I don't know. I don't quite see the difference. You're both going to have to have something to review. And is this really adding a layer that's really, really making it impossible or really too much for a developer? It seems like it, you know, it's work, obviously, but I think there would be a lot of times, don't they go through a conceptual plan and go through these stages? John or Ted or is that not, that's kind of a question or was it too wrapped up? I just don't know why, you know, especially use permit, is that adding in your experience of the work you've done? Is that adding a layer that is that is too much for a developer that's that's really adding something that's not done and it shouldn't be done or you know, I don't understand why we shouldn't do that, but from what we read.
I mean, in my experience, I mean, I don't think so. I've been on both sides. I represent developers and municipalities. I mean, especially considering where we were, where we're, you know, at one time we were talking about a floating zone and a rezoning. And we've kind of taken a couple of steps back and made it a little, made it easier with a special use permit. You know, before the developer gets into any details of any project, they're going to want to know that, you know, the municipality is conceptually okay with what they want to do. So this gives them the opportunity to obtain that conceptual approval before they get into, you know, all the details on a site plan review. So I think calling it a special use permit, having, you know, the criteria, having the procedure set out, it just, it makes that this way, everybody is working from the same playbook, you know, developers know what to expect. That's really, that's really what they want is just, okay, what's this going to take? You know, I think, you know, I with the way Marie has it worded, I mean, I guess depending on the board, some boards may ask for more information. Some could ask for less. It's, it's kind of just, it's kind of vague as far as, you know, what they're, what they're required to provide and what the process is. So one of the things, like I said, is, you know, I think Ted has like certainty. It's certain as, you know, it's a start and it's, it's got to be tweaked, but I think, you know, it's a specific special use permit. There's specific criteria and there's specific process and procedures that are laid out. And I think any developer, again, kind of wants to know what they're getting into.
I don't disagree with what you said, John. I would just strike from our conversation for the moment, the phrase special use permit. So D has all of the requirements or a list of the requirements that a developer would have to submit to the village board for approval before the village board would approve that the developer can move forward to site planning. And what concerns me is the list of things that which which are not all here. I don't think we have in here the a community character. We don't have aesthetics. John, I think you wanted landscaping added. It's almost as if the whole project has to be planned out before the the developer can begin working with the planning board to be to place, do do things like where are the streets going to go? Really, where are the streets going to go? Really, where are the streets going to go? How many units are going to be on a particular street? What type of units are they going to be? What's the, the, what's the size of each of those units? So it just seems as if everything has to be there before the developer can begin getting involved with the planning board. And all of that now falls on the village board.
Now, from my understanding, I, the conceptual plan would be the first step and would the bulk requirements and, and all of that even be included in, in that review? I mean, we're looking at the, we're looking at the conceptual plan and, and that's the first step. But it, it's not gonna be, you're not gonna be have the exact bulk requirements. You're not gonna have the setbacks. You're not gonna have where sidewalks are. But it's gonna give the, it's gonna give the village residents an opportunity to look at it. It's gonna give the board an opportunity to look at. And Ted's, you have the, the planning board is looking at it and, you know, making their recommendation and sending it back. And there's also the G I S, which, which will help guide, guide the board into the decision. I don't think we get, I, I think as you continue in this, and the next step, when it goes to the planning board for site approvals, then all of those, everything that's listed will be taken into account. Like, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Ted and John. The first step, we're, we're not gonna get into that much of a detail, are we, as far as bulk requirements and setbacks? And whether it's residential or live work or, or any of that?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm asking Ted. I'm asking Ted and John.
It's in, it's in the document. Unless you have bulk requirements, unless you have specified setbacks.
I, may I, I have a, a recommendation that might help here in terms of finding middle ground. I see value in both Ted's approach and Marie's approach. I, where I, where I am concerned is that the types of criteria, well, first of all, criteria need to be better defined for the concept plan stage, I think. I agree with Marie and I think John's, John also made that recommendation. The kinds of questions that would be addressed at a concept plan phase are the kinds of questions that are within the wheelhouse of the planning board and the H D R B. My feeling is that another way to approach this that may be more efficient with time and also allow a more engaged public process is that the concept plan start at the planning board. It's in the district. The planning board has, takes consultation from H D R B. The planning board then reviews the, the elements of the, of the plan, of the concept plan, and then makes a recommendation to the, has a public process there and then makes a recommendation to the trustees who can also have a public process. Just, I, I get concerned about the level of detail that's being. Dave is correct that the kinds of questions that we wanna be asking in a concept plan should be asked. I disagree that it is the village board that should be doing that review. I think it is with the planning board and the H D R B with a second round review by the trustees.
But in, in Ted's plan, it does go to, for a review and that's part of what the board would be reviewing, the, the village board would be reviewing it. So in Ted's, it's going to the planning board as one of the, one of the parts that, uh, one of the things that the village board will be reviewing. So it goes to them. They'll be making recommendations which will weigh heavily on a decision. I don't think that the village board would be able to, you know, say, no, we're not gonna agree with the planning board. I think, but you can, you know, they, you can use their recommendations and the other recommendations to come up, no matter who's on the board and how much experience they have to, to make a, you know, an informed decision.
My suggestion, yes, you are right. Both, both layers are present in Ted's proposal. In Ted's proposal, it goes to the village board for, for a special use permit first. And then goes to the planning board. I am suggesting the reverse. That it goes to the planning board wherein there lies a greater degree of content expertise among its members. Because they deal with these thing with, they deal with site plans, they deal with bulk requirements, all of these questions on the regular. Unlike the Board of Trustees. Right now, we happen to have a board of, of trustees that has a lot of previous board Z B A and planning board and H D R B experience. You might not have that in the future in different configurations. I think the, the, the vagaries, the possibility for vagaries at the trustee level is something that needs to be considered. I think the planning board should be the first stop with a recommendation to the trustees with public process and both, in both, at both steps along the way.
So I think that's how it's written. I think it's the special use permit application is submitted to the village board, but then the village board immediately refers it to the planning board for a recommendation. And then the planning board kicks it back with its recommendation to the village board.
But, but it's the village board that makes the decision and not the planning board.
Correct. I mean, I guess.
I think it should be the reverse. I think it should be advisory and that the planning board, the, the ultimate decision making lies with the land use board.
Oh, I see. So you, you think it should, okay.
I think that there should be a consult, a, a consult with, with the village trustees. The trustees have a public process and make recommendations back. But all that ultimately the decision making as with, and this is an unusual property because it is, it's a stra- it's a strategic property for the village, the future of the village, right? It's not, it's not an everyday project in the village, but it is in its review process every day. Meaning the same, the, the planning board is looking at its usual checkbox, its usual items. Where, where the, where we want and where I think Dave is trying to get is to additional oversight because of the nature of the project and the strategic, the strategic nature of it, the additional oversight of the trustees. I, I don't have a problem with that, but I would, I personally want the primary responsibility and primary determinations to be happening at the land use board level.
I'm just listening to this. Don't come in and listen to it. It's a village board meeting. I don't know what they're talking about.
Please, whatever.
So Kathleen, I just wanna understand what you're trying to get across, which is that the planning board would be the sole planning board in the architectural and historic review board would be the sole agencies responsible for approval. And the village board would be in an advisory capacity only with no teeth in the kinds of recommendations that they would make back to the planning board?
That's not, that's not necessarily what I'm saying. Not saying that there have no teeth, that the village board should have no teeth, but I think that the, the primary decision and the ultimate decision should land with the planning board. And it's, you know, perhaps there's, it's something like the, that the trustees, the trustees approve contingent upon planning board approval. Or the trustees have, trustees have approval capacity. They can only overrule the, the planning board by super majority or some, some element. I don't know. What I, what I'm, what I am concerned about is vagaries of changing elected boards impacting outcomes and facility with the content in the way that the planning board has.
Right. I, I mean, if that's your concern, I would suggest just keeping the village board out of the equation altogether then and just have the planning board issue the special use permit.
I mean, that would be, that would be where I would go, but I understand Dave's concern and I'm wondering if this isn't a compromise. To have a, to reverse the primary and consultary consulting roles.
I mean, I, I mean, I have never seen a village board providing a recommendation on a planning board approval. I don't think that's, and again, because the village board is more political. So the idea behind the planning.
That's the, that's the point I'm concerned about.
Right. So, but the idea behind a planning board providing the recommendation is that's your, that's your factually science based recommendation. But if that is your concern, then I would suggest just having the planning board issue the special use permit. No referral or recommendation from the village board and that'll eliminate your concern, which, and that's fine too. I mean, it's still a special use permit. It's still the same criteria. You just eliminate the, the political aspect.
I, I would disagree with that change. I, I, I'm not for that. And I, I think to Kathleen's point before about the board versus, you know, the planning board and the expertise that the planning board has and, and, you know, their knowledge versus a, a, you know, a village board, which is true. And, and I think the same thing here is true that we're, we're not taking advice from two, you know, professionals that do this for a living and deal with this daily and put this together. So why are we the, you know, the inexperienced driving a different, a, a different, you know, plan or a different district or a different way that it's written than two professionals that we hire that the village is paying to give us guidance that have come up with something. I, I, I don't understand that because it's the same exact thing as, you know, having a planning board and with their information, you know, and, you know, not needing to listen to a village board or the village board having more power over them, you know? And I agree, I, but, but in this, when I keep looking at this, it's like the initial stage is pretty much to give everyone an idea of what it's like, a conceptual idea. And it goes to the planning board. And if you want to can go to the H D R B and they can make recommendations. And then the board can, you know, look at all of that, but we'll know, it'll be a first step in understanding the plan.
But the first step, I guess, John, John just actually reinforced what I was saying is insulating, insulating from political vagaries. If the, if the, the, the information that is being put forward in the concept plan, again, is within the wheelhouse of the planning board and the H D R B. I believe that that is where it should start and not have to ha- have the content experts making the recommendation to the village board or seeking, seeking comment from the village board. In the same way that if, when they are lead agency on Seeker. This is what it is, it is not, it is not our usual practice to have the village board as the gatekeeper on land use projects. It is the content expertise of the planning board and the H D R B.
Right. And I think the idea of this was kind of a unique piece of property and given all the importance, the size, the potential for development, the environmental considerations. That's kinda why we had suggested the village board, I mean.
And who are, who, who among us in this structure of, of the village is the regular engager, engagers, if that's a word, of that level of detail and that content? It's our planning board and our H D R B. It is not our village board unless our village board members have come up through the ranks of the planning board and the zoning board and the H D R B. Some of us have, some of us have not.
Right. And, and you raise an excellent point. Marie raised excellent points as well. I mean, you know, this is your, it's your zoning, it's your amendment. So you know, this, it's your decisions. Ted and I are only here to provide guidance based upon our experience. So I, I don't have any issue if you just wanna make a special use permit with the planning board. I mean, that, that is fine as well.
I'd be interested to hear if other trustees have thoughts. I know Fran, Fran's not feeling well.
Can you comment on Kathleen's proposal?
Like, I can unmute for a minute. Just, I'd, I'd be interested in, in since Ted wrote this. What was the, what was your thoughts on having a village board of trustees get involved with this? And also on Kathleen's comments, we have been through a number of years back, planning boards that are about as political as we would talk about the village board of trustees being depending on who's on the planning board and who, who appoints them. Uh, so it's not that if we go to the planning board, it's gonna be carte blanche, it's gonna be perfect. So I think that needs to be, to be taken into account too. But I'd be interested in hearing back from Ted, if you don't mind it. Since you proposed this, what were your thoughts on having the village board of trustees involved in this? And I think maybe that, maybe what we're looking at is we're thinking you have it more in depth than it is. I don't think you have the village board of trustees. From what I'm reading in the beginning, doing much other than looking at the applications and passing them on to the planning boards. And I didn't read, I have to go back and read it again and I apologize. But, um, that's my comments. Thanks.
Well, to answer Fran, I think the origin of this really was what I had heard was an expression of concern on the part of the village board that all of the.
Members, members of the village board. I'm sorry Ted, just to be clear, not the village board, but members of the village board expressed.
The village board, yes. And that, that was my understanding that there were some concerns about having the village board retain some measure of control. And the entire concept that, that I came up with, I think was, was a response to that to allow for some level of review authority on the part of the village that wouldn't involve the kinds of detailed planning and engineering that goes on for site plan approval by the planning board, but was more concept related over the overall development scheme that would be proposed by the developer when they, when they get to the planning board. And that the village board would be responsible for taking a look at, at some of the bigger village wide issues such as consistency with the comprehensive plan, with the potential for fiscal impacts, the need for looking beyond the property itself at the traffic impacts on the village and how to solve the dilemma of having sufficient ingress and egress to that area of the village, which is currently restricted. And that seemed to be a bigger issue that would typically be, be handled by a village board, which is responsible basically for streets and intersections within the village in any case. And so it seemed to make some sense to have a village board looking over that sort of thing. There may be phasing issues that would affect implementation of, of a project so that it's done over a period of time rather than all of a sudden having, creating new demands on water and sewer. Perhaps changes to traffic patterns within the village. These are all, you know, sort of big, big picture issues that seem to make sense. But, you know, with that said, I mean, I, I don't see that if, you know, if there isn't consensus, consensus on the board for having a two-step process involving two different boards that you couldn't redo this, tighten it up and have the planning board responsible for issuing the special use permit. You know, would have to be re, redone, but, but I think that's, you know, another way to do it. You know, it's not unusual to have two different boards involved. I've often seen zoning boards of appeal have the authority issue special use permits and planning boards issue site plan approval. So it's not unusual to see two different boards involved in projects like this that require both a special permit and site plan approval. So it, you know, it could be done. I think it's, it depends on, on, you know, how the board wants to, wants to go on this.
Would it be a reasonable compromise or I don't wanna use the word compromise, but you identified some topics which are broader and more and, and less quantifiable as having those topics addressed by the village board and have the planning board address topics that are much more quantifiable. So that there's two different groups that are responsible for two different sets of topics.
And if there were a way to, at some point, it's going, I think it makes sense in a project of this size and scale for there to be sort of meshing, right? Where you have the trustees and the planning board working, working together. And that's an interesting point, Maria, is having topic areas that then.
One, one thing that I, I, I did not pay a lot of attention to the Butterfield, which is a project of similar size. The Butterfield project, how long it took to get a site plan approval for that? The Butterfield project, how long it took to get a site plan approval for that? Does anybody remember?
It was 2015 when it was given, I think, and 2012 is when it began roughly. That's my recollection.
The reason that I ask that is site plan approval, if I remember correctly, in the code is required within 62 days. So there's, there's a time limit on the amount amount of time in the code, if I remember correctly. There's a time limit that that is given to the planning board to reach a decision. A project like this, I would think would stress or strain any board to reach conclusions on the magnitude of the project and the elements involved.
Yeah, H and I both reference 60 days, Marie.
Can I can I ask a question? I mean, maybe I I don't understand the process. It it seems like when that Marie, it seems like that you believe that the first step, the concept, you know, the conceptual plan and the and the village review is way more, you know, detailed than I see it as. It sounds, it seems like I, the way I look at it is I don't think a review on that, besides if you have to do, you know, the G I S or get impact statements back, if that's part of it. Besides, you know, the 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 have the planning board review and do that separately and then send that back. And for the village board to actually just look at what it a conceptual plan to see what it might look like and and to kind of vote on that or agree on that. I I I don't see them go that taking forever or being a really long step or or a step that's, you know, really going to take. It's not that detailed. It's like it's first step. So it's like, if I might continue, thank you. If I just think that it's it's, I'm sorry, while I'm talking, I don't do that to other people. I don't think so. If I could continue my thought, I I I just, it just seems a conceptual plan and what we wanted was some little, a little more control. And one of those would be so that the village, all the residents, all the people in that area would get to see what this would kind of look like. Yeah. How much building could actually maybe go there or what the developer would like to put there? And you're, that's what we're we're looking at. We're not looking at the bulk. We're not looking at setbacks. We're not looking at anything else. It's like, so they look at that, the planning board will be looking at the same thing. And then the other questions that, you know, that have to be answered are, can you even do this? Or that you need the environmental impacts on there. So, you know, and then once, once that's handed, once that's reviewed and once the planning board sends their recommendation, the village board would approve it most likely. And, you know, if the planning board was on board with it and and there was nothing else that they hadn't seen that would stop the project or make it not, you know, beneficial to the village, it would, it would then be handed off to the planning board. I don't know if it would come back to them. The planning board wouldn't have further say over anything. It would be handed off to the planning board, right? And then the planning board would do the site review or a site plan review. It's like, I I don't know why I I just, I guess I don't understand how complicated that is the is the conceptual plan in the first stage of review.
Well, I think it's, you know, the idea here is not to get it down to the level where you need to go through and do all of your engineering analysis that involves stormwater pollution prevention plans and involves exactly how you're going to hook in water and sewer and and so forth. You're you're looking much more at at the broader development of the site. How much open space is going to be provided? Are you going to have it public open space, private open space? You know, what's the mix of residential? Is it two, three, four bedroom, single family? Is there some other sort of of residential developments such as the work live units? Where would they be? Would they be above retail? You know, would there be offices above retail? Would offices be standalone? You know, how would all of these things fit in in terms of the kinds of traffic that they would generate? And you can easily, you don't have to do, you know, a full scale traffic analysis that involves, you know, capacity analysis of all the intersections in the village. But you do need to have some sense as to what the levels of traffic would be for the different uses. And there are certainly a lot of implications between the different types of uses. Office, retail can have very high traffic, can be very high traffic generators and residential can too. But, you know, depending upon the mix of whether it's single family, work, live units and so forth, that can be very, very different depending upon all of those. So, you know, that was the idea was to create a a concept for the site and then to leave out the details to be worked out at the planning board level. Once those overall planning concepts are are are, you know, handled at the at the village board level or at some higher level.
So coming back to the concept plan and and following up on Dave's question, Ted. So let's say that the concept plan would say there are going to be five east west streets and six northwest connecting streets. And on street X, there will be three single family homes. And on street Y, there will be a restaurant and two retail shops with apartments above. Is that the kind of detail that would be expected in a concept plan?
Well, I think it would have to be accompanied by some sort of a illustrative plan to show the overall layout. And that would be an appropriate place to include some, you know, concept building elevations to show, as Kathleen said, the scale, the mass of the buildings, how they relate to the single family that's across constitution from the site. You know, how they relate to other parts of the village. You know, it is a gateway location to parks in the village, you know, how does it relate to that? Are there trails through the property that would would bring people from, you know, the rest of the village to some of the recreational opportunities that are available in that area of the village, you know, these are sort of the bigger issues that are, you know, more village wide kinds of of issues.
Well, they would then be included in the conceptual plan.
Yeah, yeah.
So conceptual plan then would would if if I had a set of Legos, I would have a piece of plywood with different Legos color coded for residential or retail and residential above and light industry and whatever, so that someone looking at it could get a sense of what's going on on that block on that street. Whatever.
Well, many, many, yes. To answer your question, many communities go through this process through charrettes, which are design workshops where the public is involved and it's a, it's a face to face meeting. It's an intense, it can be an intensive planning process that can go on for days. And it actually gets people to sit down and to go through different scenarios for development of the site. And it's used very successfully in 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 those kind of contexts. And it's, and it deals with more of the concepts behind an overall development.
In fact, we have some of those conceptual plans for that property that were done 10 years ago.
2011, yes.
And it was your guy that that came up with some of the concepts of of where things might go.
Ray Curran, yes.
He was from Green Plan, correct, Ray Curran?
Well, Ray Curran was, he was actually a Sina Hudson employee.
Sina Hudson employee.
Yeah. And after the real estate crash in 2008, a lot of Sina Hudson employees lost their jobs and Ray was one. He was looking for work. He had done a lot of design work for Sina Hudson. He was involved in a number of of concept plans, probably the the best known one was daylighting the Sawmill River in in Yonkers.
Yes.
Yeah. And he was well known for
Yeah.
coming up with great plans for that. So he seemed to be a a good mix. I asked him if he would be available to be able to work as a subcontractor on that one. And he was available and he did some concept plans. I think he did it for for other areas in the village as well. It wasn't just Marathon. But I still have that that concept plan and I actually pulled it out today to take a look at it. And it did show a variety of different housing. I tried to come up with, actually, I I'm working on the seeker for the zoning and I I was trying to come up with some exact numbers on what he had included in there in the way of, you know, it's obviously, it's obvious when you look at the plan that he included some single family. There's other buildings that look like they might be two family. Then there's others that look like they were multi-family, retail, office. And I just, I couldn't find the actual numbers of what were included in that analysis that was done. And I'm going to contact Ray and see if he has some of his original notes from from when he worked on that. But but that was the idea was, you know, he did it all by hand. It was a, it was a hand draw in concept and that he did for the Marathon site. And I remember it got a mixed reaction at a meeting. I think it was May 14th of 2011, when there was a public meeting on this thing.
He also did dock side.
Pardon?
He also did dock side.
Dock side, yes, that's right.
And then those, Marie, am I remembering correctly that those concept plans were then that became part of the comp plan and the L W R S?
I don't know that they went into the comp plan.
Or they they informed those sections, perhaps is a better way to.
I think what they did is they showed the possibilities of mixed use on the property and that there was an achievable and appropriate mix of uses that eventually did make it into the recommendations to have mixed use on the Marathon site and and exact specify those exact uses such as work, live units, retail, office and and residential. I just don't, I just don't have the numbers of exactly what went into that concept plan, but I do have the plan. I can show it to you if you, if you want me to share my screen. You could see what it actually looks like, but.
Might actually be cool.
If you're interested, I'll, I can get it up on my screen.
Because the comp plan was completed but not approved prior to that date.
Could you use cut out the beginning? Could you say that again?
It it didn't influence, it didn't make it into the comp plan because the comp plan was the comp plan was completed but not yet approved prior to the date that Ted mentioned.
Got it.
Are you interested in seeing that? I have it on my screen now.
I am. I don't know if others are.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
Okay. Can everybody see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So that was essentially it. I think, you know, these looked like they were single family. It's hard to tell with these boxes, you know, what they were. This looks like it may have been office. This might have been retail or it might have been the opposite. I I just don't recall and I don't have those numbers. But it did show that there was a a path to accommodating parking on the site, pub, some public use for a public green here. And, you know, having some respect for the, you know, the single family that's already in existence in that area. And as you can see, you know, the relationship to West Point, foundry reserve and and so forth.
In the in the bottom line, those were, that was retail.
This was retail. Okay.
Yeah.
Regardless of what they are, and I guess we could guess and we could waste some, not waste, sorry, use more of our precious time here with these guys in going over what exactly we think each one is, or if that's a hip roof or a gable roof. But I mean, I think this is the idea of what a conceptual plan is and that they would bring this in or something similar to give everyone a look at what could be built there with a, you know, maybe their wish list is. And and I think that's, that would be the initial first step and why I think it should go to the board. And the board should look at this and weigh in on it with the public and from, you know, feedback from the bill, the boards and and go from there. I don't think they should determine exactly where everything goes. But, I mean, I think any person could look at this, I would hope and say, that looks a little too much or that's why is this here or whatever, not enough green space or they're also working with, they'll be working with a consultant and and an attorney, I hope. Whoever is reviewing this at the initial steps and say, you know, you might want to be concerned about here or there was, you know, on the south end of the property that was supposed to be protected.
Sorry, Dave. So this is a concept drawing. A concept plan is called for under item three. A, I'm sorry, D three has a number of components in addition to a concept drawing. That is a narrative of improvements, conceptual plans for future uses, project phasing, fiscal impact, projected transportation impacts, public engagement, which is obviously the most critical part, seeker, planning board consult, other agency consult, public hearing, village board action. So what we've just looked at is a concept drawing. Those components are what I did, are what are identified as a concept plan. And that's the, that's the element that I that I happen to think is better those that 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 level of detail, I think, is better reviewed at the planning board.
And they will be reviewing it.
I'm saying start at the planning board. That's my suggestion.
I know what you're saying. It's been made very clear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ted, you were going to say, sorry.
Yeah, I I'm just wondering if if in Kathleen's suggestion that you're looking at this sort of in the way that subdivisions are are reviewed through sketch plan phase and then a preliminary and then a final phase so that you know, a person that is proposing a subdivision of a property would first come in with a sketch. And I've seen some very rough sketches for sketch plans that are submitted to planning boards. And the planning board looks at it. They take a look at consistency with you know, various factors within the zoning and the subdivision regulations. And it's done in a very conceptual phase. In fact, sketch plan approval is not an approval per se. And it's you, a planning board can reach consensus on a sketch plan without actually violating seeker and its requirements that there be a seeker review done before any sort of a decision is made. The sketch plan is not really the decision that's being made. It's simply an acknowledgement that the overall design of the subdivision meets the subdivision regulations. It's got the right number of houses. It is respected. You know, it it's respectful of of the topography on the site and the location of wetlands on the site and on and on and on. Then the developer goes back and they prepare much more detailed drawings for preliminary approval. And the preliminary approval is the actual approval that requires the seeker review process before the board can say, yes, we're going to approve the preliminary plan. And then once that's done, then even greater detail is provided for the final subdivision plan. So is is that what you're, what you're thinking, Kathleen?
Well, I think that that sounds like a much more predictable process for both the village and the developer. It it is, it is defined. It sounds as if there is less repetition than what I feel currently happens in this version with the village board and the planning board. Right? You're, that's looking at, that's that's approaching the project more in a staged way with public engagement all along the way. That, I mean, to me, that that seems reasonable.
So would it be a like sketch plan approval by the village board and then a special use approval with all the criteria of the planning board? Is that what you're thinking? And then various site plan approvals depending on the applicant, whether they want to do by phases, whether they want to do it with a special use permit. Is that kind of what you're hinting at is?
I mean, I think that sounds that that does seem to accommodate, I think, if I'm understanding Dave correctly, it does seem to accommodate his concern that we start with a vision, right? And a concept and then begin to move into layers of detail. That happens in that way much more logically than what is laid out here, which calls for all of that upfront with the sketch, the 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 concept drawing. the 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 concept drawing. That seems like a more logical process to me. And yes, I think I think the way you're presenting it is good. That you start with that very, very broad idea. That trustees, I would prefer it all to happen at the planning board, but I understand that we have, we have varying positions here that need to be accommodated and that seems like a reasonable accommodation.
Ted, in your proposal, have you, have you, have you, you know, has this been in, have you experienced this as what you're proposing and other projects that you've done?
I have lived. Oh, you say you're asking me?
No, I'm.
Oh, okay. That was obnoxious, but you're not asking me. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I actually, I haven't seen it done that way.
No, I mean, have you, your proposal, have you worked with your proposal before in other projects?
Well, it's, I mean, it's not the same as any other project, but I think I have worked with other villages where this sort of a phased approach is is required as part of overall development that would have a big impact on on a village. And I think I provided some of those sections probably over a month ago. Well, maybe it wasn't that long ago, but I I believe that I forwarded a number of different actual code provisions that were in fact even much more detailed than the one that I developed here for cold spring. In fact, the one that I'm thinking of, it's, it was for the Village of Warwick and it actually involved some elements of of including illustrative form of developments, how buildings would be sited on lots. It was a much more involved process that the Village of Warwick was interested in. They were in a very similar position where the village board wanted to retain some control over over big developments within the village. So they wanted to have that two-stage process that began with with the village board and then ended with a planning board. And I I think you've got that. If you don't have it, I can always send it out again. So you can take a look at, in contrast, what's proposed here. I mean, the village or I think it went on for the concept plan approval alone went on for many, many pages. And was much more involved, but it did involve, for instance, the generic EIS and then the site specific EIS. Generic being the village board's purview and then the site specific was the planning board's review. So. But, you know, I don't know, John, whether something like this, you know, if it were to go outside of the New York State Village Law confines, whether or not it's something that that could be done, would we have to, would it have to be a supersession of village law in order to accomplish something like this? If it was sort of be to be a hybrid kind of process?
You mean like the sketch plan approval by the village board?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, to make it, yeah.
Um, I would, I guess in what way would it be contrary to the New York State Village Law?
Well, I don't know that it would necessarily be contrary, but I don't know of anything in New York State Village Law that, you know, something that is simply an approval without further definition. You know, sketch approval, yes, but what are the requirements in sketch plan?
Yeah. Right. And so that kind of circles back to the initial discussion, why, why do we call it a special use permit? Because there's, everybody knows, at least in our field, Ted and I, we know what that means. We know the criteria. So I I mean, I guess we could look at the, so we have to have some type of the the village board, when looking at the sketch, they need some type of criteria to say thumbs up or thumbs down.
Yes.
And maybe we can pull stuff from, I think, your scenario with the subdivision regulations, where they do sketch, sketch plan approval. Maybe we can just pull some language from there and that would provide the guidance for the village board as far as whether they like the sketch or they don't like the sketch.
Would it be done in a way where it doesn't actually constitute an approval by the village board, but is is a recommendation to the planning board, you know, as?
Yeah, I think it would just step in the special use permit process. So maybe you submit an application to the planning board for a special use permit and the planning board refers it to the village board for a sketch approval, the first step. And then the village board.
At that phase, could, excuse me for interrupting, John, at that phase, could the, could the village board have a public, hold public meetings, not hearing necessarily, but public meetings for response to that sketch?
Yeah. Yeah, certainly.
To inform its feedback to the planning board?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Yes. Yeah, they can certainly have a public meeting.
And then that would inform the back.
Yeah, I don't think there's any against them having a public hearing, taking a public comment.
Point out that chapter one eleven has a full section on sketch plans being reviewed by the planning board. What's required and what they, what they look for, the content of the sketch plan.
Right. So we can probably pull from that and that will give us the guidance as far as how much information and then what are the criteria that the the village board would be looking at before they they sign off on the sketch plan and send it back to the planning board for for the special use permit concept, conceptual plan approval.
The only thing that I I would throw out as a concern would be whether or not any village board action on it would be would constitute an approval as it's defined the secret regulations, because then that would bind the village board into doing their own seeker on, you know, sketch plan unless it was worded properly.
Could it be contingent upon seeker review and review by planning board or approval by planning board?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we call like a sketch plan recommendation to the planning board. As a non-binding recommendation. So that way it's not a final action.
I mean, I think there's, there is a sweet spot here between these two plans. I think a, some sort of visual, call it what you want, a site plan. Doing charrettes, I think, is a great idea. I think most people will have an easier understanding if there's a concept in a visual way for them to respond to. I certainly know that I would, even just seeing that little sketch hand drawing was was very helpful for me and I'm sure it was for other people on this call. I don't think we're that far apart on this. I do kind of feel like we don't need to reinvent the wheel here, like all rules and regulations and and examples of this type of planning has been done in other places. We we are special because it is cold spring and it's close to our hearts, but we have the tools necessary to do this. So I think we're getting, we're getting closer to refining what this should look like and 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 I do think there is a synergy between the two plans that have been suggested and I personally, and again, I think I asked for this a couple of weeks ago and excuse me if I did receive it and I and I missed it, but having an idea of the step-by-step process for me, like a, like a a cookbook of directions of how this would work for all the, for all the boards, including the trustees, I think would be very helpful for us and for the public to understand.
Ted, one thing in this moment of silence that I wanted to ask you before you have to leave, the you you had said that you'd be able to in in a few days, maybe come up with whether or not the, you know, doing changing this to a mixed use would be a neg or positive deck and
Yes.
is that possible still? Or I think that really influences how we go with this?
Well, that was foremost in my mind, so I was working on that today. I developed a set of assumptions. And I'm I'm going through and I want to make sure that I have the assumptions correct. So I I hope to get this to you tomorrow. In fact, I'll plan to. I've begun to do a preliminary analysis of some of the, you know, based on on what the assumptions would come up with for the I one zone as it is presently configured in the zoning versus the MU one or a PMU or whatever you want to call it and the kind of of mix of uses that are built into that, including the forty percent residential, thirty percent non-residential, and then thirty percent other things that I think is in the one that you've sent out just a few days ago, Marie. The updated for the plan mixed use district, the PMU one. So it would basically follow that sort of of thing. And but there's a lot of, you know, it's, it's critical as far as the assumptions of, you know, what would be permissible there. And so I would like to get some feedback on that. And, you know, if everybody looks at it and says, this looks like a a good set of assumptions, let's go with it. Then I think I can come up with some numbers and can begin the process of assessing how different it could be under the current versus proposed. I think the big one, which I I looked at today was if it were to be developed for strictly office or industrial use under the current zoning, that could, you know, with a thirty-five percent coverage could result in a couple hundred thousand square foot structure on that property. And I think the, you know, when you start to look at some of the the factors that are used in in developing an impact analysis such as the peak hour vehicle trips, the acres of a previous surface, the water demand, sewer demand and so forth. You know, those are the kinds of things that would be compared between a residential mixed use development on the site and what you could achieve if you were to develop it under the current zone. So those things are key and the assumptions are key. So I will plan to to send that out to everybody tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not sure where we're, where we've settled here. So not sure what to say. I'm happy to follow John and Ted's lead. So we're that's what we're paying for is their advice and we were giving, given. We were sent a, you know, a zoning that Ted had come up with using the PMU one. So I'm fine with that. If the majority of the board wants it tweaked or changed to something or other, then I think you're going to have to we'll have to give directions, further directions to Ted. And, you know.
Would, would it be okay for John and myself to talk about this, you know, maybe to compare our notes from the meeting today? And see if we come up, can come up with some path forward that would then lead to some further modifications to to the MU or PMU district?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, because it sounds like the it sounds like at least some of the board members want some type of sketch plan approval by the village board. I guess, you know, how we craft that, like as Ted had mentioned, you know, with, you know, there are some concerns, but I think we can craft it where we could do that similar to a sketch plan in a subdivision. Is that seem to be the consensus of of the board members?
I I guess it would be the steps and I know what we, what would follow that or what, you know, is that all the village board would be looking at or what else would they be doing in the the initial steps of this? Or is a special use permit going going to the planning board and then going back to the village board? And then how does that affect the planning board in their site plan review? So, you know, I I'm not sure. There's a lot of things have been out here. We're not talking about the two plans anymore. Now we've gone to a third plan. I I think that you're right now, we're.
Well, I think it's just, it would be just tweaking Ted's to add some type of sketch plan review by the village board and it sounds like the special use permit with the planning board and the concept special use permit with the planning board.
And and the, I think that's maybe what was one was expressed by one trustee.
Right.
The, what what would be the difference in the the planning board receiving it and the village board receiving the, doing the first steps in this, the conceptual plan? Or does that, you know, take any controls away or you know, the, would the planning board still work under a first phase, which would be a conceptual improvement? Or what would the first step be for? Would it be different from the village board?
Board? I mean, I guess one proposal out there is to to have the first step being a sketch plan review and recommendation by the village board. And then the next step would be a a special use permit conceptual plan approval by the planning board. And then thereafter would be site plan approval by the planning.
So the one step and in the conceptual plan or when it goes to the planning board for that, is that when what what I really want and don't want to lose, regardless of how we, the steps are, is that the the public upfront sees what's going, it's proposed there so they can comment on that. So would that be included in this step?
That's, yeah, it could be included in all three steps.
I think it should, it must be it in all three steps, in my view.
Well, yeah, it has to be for the special use permit, obviously, for the site plan under your code. I think it would be, yeah, but it's up to you guys can write it however you want. So if you want public meetings or even public comment on the sketch, you know, we can write it up that way.
Okay.
I think that sounds like, I think it sounds like it hits a little bit of what everyone was looking for in terms of process.
So Ted, what you had suggested a next step kind of from tonight and reviewing or putting down maybe suggestions or how do you see this happening next step?
I think Ted and I need to kind of circle back tomorrow and kind of iron some things out, but I I guess if I'm hearing, is everybody okay with this three step? I mean, I don't want to move forward if it's only one or two board members.
Well, I'm not sure what, why it would go to, I guess, like your, your question before is why, why not just eliminate the village board on it? If if a special use permit goes to the, goes to the planning board and the planning board has to in its steps do a conceptual approval.
Right.
And and that includes a a public, public meeting or a public hearing and also a G I S. Then I'm okay with that.
Right. That that's an option as well. Just have it a special use permit for the planning. We're just eliminate the first step.
So we are we asking to eliminate the concept plan?
No, 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 no. So I guess there's, there's two questions really. One is, do you feel like it's necessary to allow the village board to have some type of review, whether it's just even it's just a sketch plan review? And then the next question is, you know, it sounds like everyone's leaning towards the planning board reviewing and deciding upon the conceptual plan, which would be a special use permit.
I I, to me, that that hits, that hits all the elements. You start in a broad, in a broad way with initial public comment on the concept and then drill down in more detail as you go forward with the concept plan under the the actual plan, not just the sketch, but the plan and then on to site plan review.
So the current process is sketch plan, preliminary site plan, final site plan. I'm not hearing much difference.
It, I mean, it sounds very parallel to me as well, Marie.
Right. That's the subdivision approval process.
Except you've got that initial, you've got that initial step with with the sketch pant plan, which I think is what Dave's expressing. Correct me if I'm wrong, what I think Dave is expressing is wanting, wanting the the big picture concept put before the trustees first and then on to a more detailed review from there. Is that correct, Dave?
I I just want, I want the public to see, along with the board who is part of the public.
The public has to have concept, has to have review at every stage. Yes, we've all agreed that.
Well. Okay.
I I like, I like the the concept to go to the village board first for the public's first review. Just as a review process, just to, just not, not to make a decision, but just to start with. This is the, this is the concept, if it's a, if it's a concept drawing, something that we can look at and present to the, to the public before it moves on. I think I don't like the village board having some step in the beginning of this and then pass it on. It's gonna be a lot. But I think they should have some piece of it.
I agree.
I'll agree with that. So to John and Ted, I guess, you know, if we can come up with something where it goes to the drop. So to John and Ted, I guess, you know, if we can come up with something where it goes to the drop planned, you know, the sketch plant or drawing goes to the village board, village board and can then show the public or have the public comment on that. And then the next step would go to the special use permit to the
Planning board.
Planning board.
Okay. All right. So Ted and I, I'll circle back with Ted tomorrow or Thursday, and we'll work on stuff internally before we release it to you guys for review.
Yep.
Can I ask a dumb dumb question? So what in this scenario, what I what I think is happening here is that the old I one becomes PMU two, that's the underlying zoning and the process flows out from that underlying zone. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing further, Marie, are you okay on this plan or or is there something you'd like to add to it?
See it.
What's that?
I'd just, I'd like to see it.
Okay, I agree. Okay, that said, it's six thirty-six and I appreciate Ted and John making time for us tonight and also the board getting here early. So we'll continue our meeting, but you're you're released.
Okay.
Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the is presentation to audit results.
Good evening. I'm John Costolo with EFPR Group, we're the independent financial auditors of the Village of Cold Spring. You should have been professional standards require us to communicate with you regarding matters related to the audit that are in our professional judgment, significant and relevant to your responsibilities and overseeing the financial reporting process. We previously communicated our audit plan document outlining our plan for the audit of the village as of and for the year ended May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, including a summary of our overall audit objectives, the nature, scope and timing of planned audit work. This communication is intended to elaborate on the findings from our audit, including our views on the qualitative aspects of the village accounting practice and policies, management's judgments and estimates, financial statement disclosures and other required matters. Page three, status bar audit. We have substantially completed our audit of financial statements as of and for the year ended May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Our audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. The audit of the financial statements does not relieve management or those charged with governance of their responsibilities. The objective of our audit was to obtain reasonable, not absolute assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material statements. The scope of the work performed was substantially the same as described to you in our earlier audit planning communications. We expect to issue an unmodified, that's an unqualified or clean opinion on financial statements. All records and information requested by EFPR were freely available for our inspection. Management's cooperation was excellent. We received full access to all information that we requested while performing our audit and acknowledged the full cooperation extended to us by management throughout the course of the work. Our own but items is review and approval by the Board of Trustees of the Financial Statements perform a subsequent event procedures, then seek management's signature on the management representation letter. Page four, the results of our audit. This, the following summarizes the more subsequent required communications related to our audit concerning the village's accounting practices, policies and estimates. The village's significant accounting practices and policies are those included in note one to the financial statements. These accounting practices and policies are appropriate, comply with the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America and industry practice were consistently applied and are ethically described within note one to the financial statements. Significant estimates are those that require management's most difficult, subjective or complex judgments, often as a result of the need to make estimates about the effects of matters that are inherently uncertain. The village's significant accounting estimates, including a description of management's process and significant assumptions used in developing those estimates are disclosed in note one to the financial statements. There were, there were no corrected misstatements other than those that were clearly trivial related to our two accounts and our disclosures that we brought to the attention of management related to the village as a result of our audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements other than those that were clearly trivial trivial related to counts or disclosed disclosures that we presented to management. Terminal control over financial reporting and planning and performing our audit of the financial statements, we considered the village's internal control over financial reporting or normally recall internal control to determine the audit procedures that are appropriate and the circumstances for the purpose of expressing our opinions on the financial statements, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of the village's internal control. Accordingly, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the village's internal control. Also, as part of obtaining reasonable assurance about whether the village's financial statements are free from material statement, we performed tests of its compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts and grant agreements, non-compliance with which could have a direct and material effect on the determination of financial statement amounts. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions was not an objective of our audit and accordingly, we do not express an opinion. Though we do, the tests of the results of our test disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. In conjunction with our audit of the financial statements, we did not note any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control over the village's financial statements. We, on page six, we have a recommendation about countingly, accounting for leases, Gatsby eighty-four, eighty-seven leases will become effective for the village's fiscal year beginning after June fifteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. The village does not have material leases that would be would require implementation of this, but if they ever do encounter that, this would have to be implemented. Page seven, other required communications. There is no significant changes to the planned audit strategy or significant risks initially identified and previously communicated to those charged with governance as part of our audit planning communications. There are no matters noted relevant to the audit, including but not limited to violations or possible possible violations of laws or regulations, risk of material in the statements, including fraud risks or tips or complaints regarding the village's financial reporting that we were made aware of as a result of inquiry or those charged with governance. We are not aware of any consultations about counting or auditing matters between management and other independent public accountants. That would be opinion shopping. Are we aware of opinions obtained by management from other independent public accountants on the application of generally accepted accounting principles? There were no disagreements with management matters whether or not satisfied said whether or not satisfactory we resolve that individually or in the aggregate could be significant to the village's financial statements or to our auditor's report. There was no difficulties encountered during the audit. There are no matters that we consider significant to the oversight of the village's reporting process that have not been previously communicated. Hey, Jake, we discuss our independence, our engagement letter to you describes our responsibilities in accordance with professional standards and certain regulatory authorities with regard to independence and the performance of our services. Does this letter stipulates the responsibilities of the village with respect to independence as agreed to by the village? We go on to communicate significant accounting pronouncements that are coming up from Gatsby. It does not look like any of them will have a material effect on the financial statements of the village. The next page prepared and an analytical of the statements of net position that your full accrual where we include all the long-term assets and liabilities. And some of the highlights are you're due from fiduciary funds decreased about ninety-five thousand dollars. This year, the district, the village was required to implement Gatsby eighty-four fiduciary activities, items that were previously recorded and the agency fund were now moved over to the general fund. There was no impact on fund balance with regard to that implementation. State and federal aid receivables, those decreased about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Prior year, you had chips receivables of about a hundred and forty-one thousand. Investments in low sap, that's reported to the village by a third-party administrator. Capital assets being depreciated, not depreciation for the current year, there was about eight thousand dollars in additions to capital assets. But there was three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in current year depreciation. The burnout flows of resources, pensions and low sap. These are reported to the village by New York State and third-party administrators. On anticipation notes dropped about four hundred nine thousand dollars when less was borrowed on renewal. The total OPEB liability decreased three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's actually actuarially determined and that's reported in note two B seven. Net pension liabilities proportionate shares, that's reported to the village by New York State. That's a note to be five. Net pension liability low sap again reported to the village by third-party administrator. That's note to be six. Pensions and deferred inflows of resources related to pensions and low seps that increased seven hundred and thirteen thousand again reported to the village by New York State and a third-party administrator. Your net investment in capital assets went up two hundred and one thousand current year. That's was affected by current year additions, payments on your debt and depreciation. And your unrestricted or your net deficit decreased by seven hundred and fourteen thousand. This is the residual of all other net positions. So that headed in the right direction. On your statements of activities, this is again full accrual basis. Charges for services went up about fifty-eight thousand dollars. There was increased what what water and sewer usage. Operating grants increased about sixty-eight thousand dollars. Received increased state and federal aid. Capital grants decreased about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Prior year, there was chips of chips revenue of a hundred and fifty-one thousand and FEMA revenue of twenty-two thousand. Sale of property and compensation for loss went up about fifty-three thousand. You had some insurance recoveries of about thirty-one thousand dollars and sold some real property of twenty-three thousand. And your miscellaneous revenues increased fifty-three thousand. You had ban premiums of twenty-five thousand and recommend recognize some environmental facilities corp grant of about twenty-six thousand. Under your expenses, general government, general support decreased three hundred and twelve thousand. That was actuarial changes in your pensions and OPEBs. Transportation decreased four hundred and thirteen, again, actuarial changes to pensions and OPEBs. And in the prior year, prior year, you had some street resurfacing. Home and Community Services, again, actuarial change decreased four hundred and fifty-two thousand. Again, actuarial changes to pensions and OPEB. On your balance sheet governmental funds, this is the modified accrual. There are no long-term assets or liabilities. A lot of these comments are gonna seem familiar. State and federal aid receivables decreased a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Again, prior in the prior year, you had chips receivable of a hundred and one, hundred and forty-one thousand. Other liabilities increased thirty-seven or thirty, almost thirty-eight thousand. Again, that was implementation of Gatsby eighty-four. And you're assigned fund balance increased eighty-four thousand dollars. That's what you plan on spending a fund balance on the next year's budget and that was budgeted for. Real property taxes increased forty-one thousand. That was budgeted. Sell and property sale of property and compensation for loss, one of about fifty-four thousand. Again, insurance recoveries of thirty-one thousand the prior year and sale of real property of twenty-three thousand. State aid decreased by a hundred, almost a hundred and six thousand. In the current year, you have an urban forestry forestry grant of eighty-four thousand. And in the prior year, you had the chips revenue of a hundred and forty-one thousand. Transportation expenditures decreased a hundred and two fat, almost a hundred and three thousand. In the prior year, you had street resurfacing of about a hundred and forty-three thousand was, which was offset by current year snow removal increases of about forty-four thousand. And overall, at the general for the general fund, fund balanced increased almost three hundred and sixty-four thousand from one hundred and forty-two. When, sorry, one million, two forty-two to one million, six oh six. So overall, the village had a good year. Were there any specific questions related to the financial statements or other items?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, if there's no questions, I'll let you continue on with your meeting.
I'd like to say thank you to Michelle and Jeff for working so well with EFPR, which they highlighted in their report. Nice job to both both of you.
You.
Thank you.
And John, you'll get me the management letters that need to be signed and sent out.
Yes, I'll send those out shortly.
Great.
And reports will be dated as of today, assuming the board approves the financials.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, next, next up on our agenda is Resolution seventy-three, twenty twenty-one suspension of of on-street parking Marion Avenue. Have to scroll down to that, sorry. So Resolution seventy-three, twenty twenty-one suspension on-street parking Marion Avenue. I will make a motion to, I guess, implement that.
Second.
Okay, I'll read it. Whereas village board of Cold Spring has an on-street parking regulation which limit or prohibit on-street parking at certain times and locations. And whereas the village Cold Spring conducts snow clearing on its streets during winter months. And whereas snow cleaning activity in the vicinity of Marion Avenue Benedict Road could be better conducted and coordinated with local residents if the village's on-street parking regulations are suspended on the dead-end portion of Marion Avenue south of Benedict Road to allow parked vehicles to remain there on and now therefore be resolved, the village of Cold Spring. The village board of the village of Cold Spring hereby suspends on-street parking regulations for the dead-end portion of Marion Avenue south of Benedict Road from November fifteenth, twenty twenty until this right, that's not right, right?
No.
I need to correct that, sorry.
So it'd be from November, is it gonna?
Fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the year just needs to change.
Okay, so I can read that. The dead-end portion of Marion Avenue, south of Benedict Road from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one until April fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And a copy of this resolution shall be posted in Village Hall and provided to the Village Police Department forthwith.
Trustee Marley.
Yes.
Trustee Foley. Trustee Foley.
I mute.
I'm sorry, yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Morandi.
Hi.
Okay, passes this state by vote of five zero.
Thank you. Next up, if so, I don't have to scroll back as minutes, is that correct?
Um, no, it's the.
Okay, sorry.
The board discussion on the request for relief from chapter one hundred.
Okay, thank you. So to start this off, we had Dave Marzolo asked for to present before the board his grievance. He did so. We had a lot of back and forth and around and around with Dave. So tonight, it's we need to decide on on the request and how you will, you know, vote for that. So do we have some comments on that or how we'd like to proceed? Or would you like me to just call a vote?
For clarity, Dave's request was relief from the entire chapter for a one-year period. That's the request.
I think his request was the for relief from every code that we have.
Dave.
No, I think it's true. I mean, the codes that we have in place before the short-term rentals and now the ones that are in place with the short-term rentals. Uh, he's asking for a waiver on that. Um, and yeah, so that's, that's what he is requesting. Okay, um, I guess if, uh, there's no other comment from the board, uh, I'll make him, does all those in favor of granting, uh, the relief for the, uh, to Marzolo, Dave Marzolo for the use of a short-term rental on his property on Main Street, uh, vote all those that say aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Those in favor, yes, in favor of allowing Dave Marzola or whatever the LLC is to, uh, to use the, uh, apartment for a short-term rental. Does that make sense or do we, should I re-go, should I do it again?
I got it.
All those in favor. All those that are opposed to allowing this.
Aye.
Vote aye.
Aye.
So, uh, did we hear from everyone or should I do a roll call on that or did we hear from everyone?
Believe we heard from everybody.
Okay, so I believe it was, uh, consensus of five zero, uh, to not allow the, uh, the use for a short-term rental. Okay, um, so going on to the next, uh, agenda item. We have, uh, approval of Bob Newall, um, as a full-time seasonal laborer through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one at the current rate of nineteen dollars an hour. Bob is, has been our driver on the weekends. He was our driver, you know, before he took a full-time position. He no longer has that full-time position. Um, so, um, the highway crew chief has asked if he can be, uh, can be used as a full-time worker, um, for the, uh, times indicated. So I'll make a motion to approve the hire of Bob Newall, that's full-time seasonal labor through twelve thirty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, holding it together there.
Tweets vote.
I, sorry, I'm a little, little person in the way, but I.
Approval of bills?
I'd like to make a motion to approve number six two two zero in the amount of fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think finally the, uh, minutes from the board of, uh, Board of Trustees, October fifth, twenty twenty-one, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I know, I was not actually here. I was in the emergency room, so I don't know that, if I can. I don't know.
And actually. You have to abstain.
I should probably abstain too because I was taking her to the emergency room, so I arrived late. So, but there, you have three of you to vote on the minutes.
Okay, um, so do we have that, Jeff?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, uh, next approval of minutes, uh, village board, um, October eighth, two thousand twenty-one, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, um, Board of Minute approval of Board of Minutes, yeah, right. Minutes for trustees for twelve, for October twelfth, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Fran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now at six fifty-nine. Um, would you like to take comments from the public on the, uh, and we also have to continue or make a decision on resuming the public hearing?
We haven't closed the public hearing, have we?
We have not closed it, but, uh, I think we have to, uh, indicate when we are, is that right, Jeff? Or do we have to indicate when we're, the next meeting is or when do we have to notice that?
You should say tonight when the next meet, when there will be continued. If you leave it, um, blank, then we will have to renotice.
If you what? Sorry, if you what?
If we don't select the date tonight to continue the public hearing, we will should be required then to renotice it in the papers.
Okay, so, um, Thursday, this week's no good. Um, so we're at November second, it's, uh, election night, right? So that bring us to the fourth, or are we meeting on the second? Like it hasn't been decided.
We typically do meet on election day, but I'm, I don't care one way or the other.
There is a meeting scheduled for that night.
Okay, um, and we have nothing on the meeting, obviously, or do we?
Well, there are all the resolutions and the neck decks and the secret documents that Ted supplied for chapters sixty-four, one oh eight, the other chapters which we need to, um, which would be on the agenda. As well as resolutions to adopt the local laws for those four or five chapters. And once that's done, that'll just leave us with three chapters that are unfinished.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Jeff. I don't mind meeting on the second. I don't think that we should have a public, continue a public hearing on election night when people are going to the polls.
Yeah, it might, it might just go on, well, I don't care. I mean, I'm free on both the second and the fourth, so.
Okay, we won't hold a public hearing that, or follow with that. We'll do it on, do we have anything for Thursday? Is everyone available on Thursday?
The fourth, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we will move the, uh, resume the public hearing on November, uh, November fourth. Um, this is tricky because I don't know if Ted's going to be available when, um, so we'll say six thirty. Hopefully that'll hold.
Yes, that we move everything to November fourth.
Was this?
And I suggest that we do everything on November fourth and cancel the November second meeting.
I'm fine with that as long as that, the approvals aren't going to take that long, right? Um, what, what Ted's sending, this secret?
No, I mean, half an hour to read everything, really.
Okay, all right, then I, I agree with Maria, I'm fine with moving it to that. So there'll be, uh, there'll be no meeting on the twenty-eighth of October and there'll be no meeting on the second of November. Our next scheduled meeting will be the fourth, where we'll resume the public hearing.
Sounds good.
Okay, now, next question at seven o'clock, um, we've been at it an hour and a half. Do we want to open? Uh, we, we do have a couple of emails today, but I'm not going to read them. We'll read them at the next public hearing. We'll read them into the record. We have two. Um, do we want to have public comment tonight or would you like to wait until we have something more definite?
I'm fine with hearing the public.
I'd like to wait. But then, I mean, I don't care.
Marie?
I'm here.
What's that?
I don't care if you want.
Are there hands raised?
There are, there are no hands raised.
Look, give people.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, uh, to adjourn then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys for coming early. Appreciate it.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
Feel better, Fran?
Yes.
Feel better.
Thanks, well.